Thank you.
Okay, great. I think we have a quorum. So with that, I would like to open up the January, July 6th, Planning and Building Committee meeting, and let's start with a roll call. And Carl DeSimis?
Here.
And Katrina Knudsen?
I'm here.
And Mayor Keen?
Here.
And City Administrator Tony Pieschke?
I am here.
And Councilmember Franch?
Here.
Councilmember Markley?
Here.
And Michelle Thomas?
Here.
And I'm Bob Heims, and I'm here. Okay, you all should have gotten a copy of the minutes to our May meeting. We skipped June, and hopefully you've had a chance to read them. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Move to approve the minutes?
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, they are approved. With that, let us go to the agenda items and start with the Buildable Lands Report Status Update. And I believe that is you, Carl.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. And I'm gonna kinda, I think I'm gonna kinda roll this Buildable Lands Report, their status report into the other two items as well. We, you know, we may wanna talk about those other two items afterward. But in this presentation, I think it kinda gets to all three of those items. So we'll kinda just see where it lands at the end, and we can dive into more detail if we need to on those others. But give me a second here to share my screen and see if I can get that sorted out. How is that looking to everybody? Good, okay. Excellent, thank you. So if you'll recall, the last time we spoke, we were talking about the Buildable Lands Report and the work that was kinda getting underway at the county to pull that report together. And I thought it'd be good to just kinda go through this story map presentation that the county has put online and sorta talk to all of the items that we've been doing and next steps, and in the details in between, using this as the sort of talking piece. So this, this, this figure in front of you, sorry, sorta lays out the Buildable Plans Program and, you know, from outside to inside, monitoring, which is kinda where we are a little bit right now, or at least it's where we've been, collecting and summarizing the permit data, document housing unit growth. So those are things that we do every year, provide those to OFM and the county. And that, that all helps inform the Buildable Lands Report, where we get into assumptions, assessing and categorizing the land throughout the city, and talking about capacity and calculating capacity. And so what we've done so far really is, is taken draft information that Pierce County has provided us. And we've kinda taken a deep dive into really mostly this portion of it, the assess and categorize the land and looking at the inventory, and making and ensuring that the, the land inventory as they have it set is accurate, based on what we know about it and based on, and based on permit data. So we've done, we've done that much, provided a lot of comments back to the county, and the county, and then worked with the county to refine that inventory, make it better. And currently, the county is taking those comments and discussions that we've had with them and plugging them back into the model and making some updates and changes. This is all happening in real time, real fast. Pierce County already has provided a draft of the Buildable Lands Report to the Department of Commerce on June 30th in order to meet the requirements of their grant. But that's not the end of the process, and I'll get to that a little bit more later. So this all, where does this all go? It all kinda leads into these conclusionary statements, growth plans, actual development, capacity, growth targets, housing production and growth targets. And so those are a few of the things that we've already been talking about, the growth targets. And I know it was a little, felt like a little cart before the horse, talking about those growth targets before we got to Buildable Lands, and we all had discussions about that. And it was a little bit, but it, there's, there's method to the madness.
Whoa.
Carl, can you hear us?
I've lost you.
You froze.
Yeah, he's frozen.
I don't even see him on the screen.
He's there.
Give him a second. Okay, maybe I can share my screen. Oh, I can't share while he's sharing. Oh, now I can.
Looks like he's trying to come back.
Yeah.
He's back. Sorry about that. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, so I think where Carl was leaving off is we have the requirements to collect and summarize our permit data, as well as document our housing unit growth. And that all goes into a report. And this portion here is regarding a separate portion from over here. This is all about summarizing what has happened, how we have developed over the previous years. This portion here is regarding the capacity of our land to accept future residential and employment growth. So what we have been doing in conjunction with the county, and we've provided quite a few comments. And I think where Carl was going with that prior to unfortunately getting cut off is we provided initial comments, they sent a draft, the county sent a draft to the Department of Commerce to meet their grant deadline, which was June 30th. They subsequently issued a final draft, which is available on their website, and we'll get there in a second. And we have been asked to review all of the permit data and the assumptions prior to July 23rd. So Carl and I will be kind of QCing all of the data to make sure that we haven't missed anything. And I'll get to a little bit about what that is in a second. So if you do go on this website when we give you the link, just know that it's not 100% truth yet by staff. However, they did take probably 80 comments from us and did make those changes, so that was nice. But this portion is refining assumptions, so this could be a roads deduction, this could be a market factor. This could be, well, any of the other, any of the assumptions between vacant, underutilized, et cetera. Assessing, categorize the land, and then finally calculate capacity. And if we have time today, we can show you the Excel spreadsheet and how that, how that works out. Councilmember Franch, do you have a question?
Yeah, so who was in so-called, so to speak, in charge of refining the assumptions? I mean, I, I understand you and Carl had about 80 things that you suggested. Who's driving the bus? Us or Pierce County?
Essentially, Pierce County technically drives the bus for the Growth Management Act. Counties are responsible for the Buildable Lands Reports for their respective counties. It is in conjunction with the cities, however. So they have deferred to us on most of the comments. There's a few comments that they have not been able to address, and that goes back to the start date of the land capacity analysis. And when we get further down, I'll show you kinda the difference, how they've backed out pipeline. And pipeline are projects that were permitted, not developed yet during the last report. And I can show you a visual of how that's changed. But for the, this Buildable Lands Report, January 6, 2020 is the year basically where they cut everything off. So they're not looking anywhere past January 6, 2020. And so for the city, it's a little problematic because, as you know, we've had quite a bit of development since January 6, 2020. And so that's something that Carl and I are strategizing, how we're going to overcome that in our comp plan update. In particular with employment capacity, with Latitude 47 having been constructed and now open within the capacity tables that I'll show you later, or Carl's back, he'll show you. It's still showing that that is vacant industrial land, which we know it's not.
Tony, you have a question?
You're muted.
The mic is off.
First, the statement I have is the, Councilmember Franch asked, who's driving the bus? The county is driving the bus, but the roadmap was put together by the state and by the legislature. And the key is how the county is interpreting that map. So we need to make sure that we understand what they're doing and why they're doing it. And if we have any questions about that, we need to ask them. Second, a question for Katrina, when it comes to buildable lands, does the process take into account how we have zoned our property and how much density it can take according to our zoning? Or is it being pushed by what the county and the state demand that our property actually be zoned?
Good question, and thank you for pointing out that this does stem from the legislature. That's a very important component to this. The zoning that we have is our new Gig Harbor zoning. So we've had to do a little bit of changes. That's, a lot of the comments were between density assumptions. Now that, for instance, R1 is a maximum of four, you know, we're not gonna assume something over that. So it is Gig Harbor zoning that's taken into account as a multiplier for the capacity analysis.
How about in the urban growth area?
Within the urban growth areas, since that is technically unincorporated Pierce County, that would be the county's zoning. That is not, we don't have jurisdiction over that.
Okay, so my understanding is that the, and again, in the UGA, that it goes by, like you said, the existing zoning. However, in several of the policy areas that PCRC has reviewed, upzoning comes through loud and clear as the safety valve, okay, on how you, how you meet your target. And my, and so if we, and by the way, I understand if we were to annex certain things, we not only get that area, but we also get that objective from a zoning standpoint that goes with that. And the only way, the only way you win that discussion is you obviously have to upzone somewhere, okay? And UGA would probably be it, is my guess. That may be a wrong assumption, but that's, that's strongly in my mind, that's what it's that way.
Yeah, Councilmember Heims, any upzoning or expansion, that would be dealt with through the public process of our comp plan update.
Okay.
So the council, city council would make the ultimate, the ultimate decision, would have the ultimate decision-making authority.
Okay, yes, Mayor Keen?
Yeah, um, is Katrina, is the, is the Purdy Bridge in our UGA, Purdy is?
Yes.
The bridge is in the UGA?
I believe so.
Okay, so my, my point is, I mean, we could all think that the Purdy would be a great place to annex because it's got some businesses there and everything like that. But any, any council or city would know that they don't wanna inherit the, the state's problems of the Purdy Bridge because then we have to pay for it all, and they can't, they've had 35 years to just ignore it, and they've completely ignored it. So to me, we don't have enough urban growth area because there's no way we would wanna take on, you know, a $40 million pro, $50 million project. And all the headaches of, of the citizens saying, hey, you gotta do something. I mean, just the exit to say, you can park on the shoulder when you get off, you know, to go to Purdy. You can park on the shoulder between 3:00 and 6:00, just shows that they don't know how to do it. So if we, if we have that, if that's part of ours, then you might as well redraw the lines.
Okay, thank you. But by the way, there are other reasons too, when you look at the, the mismatch of zoning up there, it's kinda interesting. Okay, let's see, Carl, you're back online with us here, and hopefully, and-
Yeah, sorry about that.
If you wanna, between you and Katrina, if you wanna take up where she left off, because she took off where you left off, I'll go from there.
Yeah.
Can you help me to share the screen, and then you can talk, and maybe that will help with the bandwidth?
Uh, sure, that'd be great. Thanks, Katrina.
Let me know when you want me to scroll.
Let's see, so yeah, if you could move, just hit the arrow to the right on this, on this slide set here. There should be an arrow over to the right. Oh yeah, there we go. Yeah, so I was just kinda going through the, the inventory categories, and I don't know how far I got. I probably talked for another five minutes before I realized it wasn't online, so I apologize. But, so the work that we've been doing to this point, and I think Katrina was, was alluding to, is going through these inventory categories and really taking the city down, you know, sector by sector, and looking at each area and ensuring that, as Tony had said, really making sure that, you know, what the county has laid out is, is exactly what, what we know is going on. We know the city better than the county does, we know the permit data better than the county does. And so it's our job to make sure that what they put into this report is as accurate as possible. So that's the work that we've been doing, and that leads into this, to these capacity calculations and assumptions. Katrina, could you move it to the next one, please? So this is kind of an overview of, of the assumptions tables that are in the Buildable Lands Report. And so this is kind of where, where the process has led us to this point. We're working through, now that we have the inventory ironed out and dialed in, we really need to dive in heavily on the assumptions. And again, make sure that the factors that they're using in their assumptions, make sure that we understand the rationale behind them and agree with that rationale. And if we have questions, then we need, now's the time, we have to ask, ask the county now to explain how they're getting to these numbers. And so these assumptions essentially work zone by zone. And they're backed up with, with permit data and trends data as well, which, Katrina, could you move to the next slide?
Yeah, I think we have a question from Councilmember Franch.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Franch, I didn't see you. I apologize.
Yeah, so is this a specific, this assumptions chart is a specific to Harbor? Or is this the one they're using for all jurisdictions?
This is just generic.
Okay, and boy, it really would have been nice to get these, I think there's gonna be about six of these slides in advance. So I could have looked this over and, and had a little bit, wouldn't be happy jumping around, and I could be a little more specific on my questions. Because this is something that I, and I really appreciate Councilmember Heims. I know he's been putting a lot of effort in following this, because this is very, something that, to me, is very, very important, so. Yeah, maybe, maybe just as a postscript, if you think, if you think it won't be too confusing, Carl, if you could send this out as a PDF or something, that we at least take a look at.
I, I'll try and get it as a PDF. I mean, I'm, I'm just borrowing this right off of Pierce County's story map from there, from the website. And this is all really just from the website, the Buildable, Pierce County Buildable Lands website that I think we had provided links to last time around, but we'll, we'll certainly send the link out. And this, this slideshow is kinda hidden in there just a little bit, the way it works, so. But yeah, I apologize, Councilmember Franch, we probably, should have, should have let you know ahead of time what we were planning on going over here, but.
And Councilmember Franch or any of the councilmembers on, if you do look at this and you have specific questions about city-specific, Carl and I are always happy to answer those for you, so feel free to reach out.
Thanks.
Yeah, and to that end, since we're on that, since we're on that subject really quick, well, actually, no, I'll cover that in just a second. I don't wanna get ahead of myself. Katrina, could you move it to the next slide, please?
Right, just one thing here, Carl, to note. As Councilmember Franch's question alludes, these are not all assumptions that apply to all jurisdictions. So some jurisdictions ask to have a capital facilities reduction or an infrastructure gap reduction. Those are not things that the city has typically had, nor that we're asking to have in this time. However, two of our current questions that we have, based on the analysis that they've done so far, is based, they don't appear to have applied a critical areas reduction to our residential areas. So we're gonna make sure that that's done, and then the road reduction is only done for some, some of our zones and not all. So, you know, as Carl was mentioning, not all of these apply to Gig Harbor, and the ones that do, Carl and I are QCing to make sure that they're accurate.
So as I was, as I was saying, the, that data in the assumptions is, is backed up with development data and trends. And so there are tables that go through zone by zone and show sort of a look back at our permit data and tell us whether or not the, or at least help us truth out the assumptions to see if the assumptions are, are close, or if they're inaccurate, why are they inaccurate? And sort of see how the Buildable Lands Report has, or how our Buildable Lands has performed over the past number, number of years. So that's a, it's another piece of the Buildable Lands Report that helps us, helps inform and helps us see if everything is sort of lining up. So, and that leads us back to the growth targets that we've been really spending a lot of, a lot more of our time discussing prior to getting into the Buildable Lands. And so as we've been saying all along, looking at the growth targets, we've, we've been kind of alluding to and kind of beating around the bush a little bit about the fact that we, it's hard to make these determinations on targets without knowing what sort of capacity we have left in the city based on our past trends and development data. So the next, the, the next sort of step in this is, after finishing up the Buildable Lands Report, is coming back to the growth target allocations and ensuring that there is consistency across the board. Katrina, could you hit the next slide? So we get into this consistency evaluation whereby we're looking at, you know, whether or not this all fits together. How does it all, how does it all fit together? And have we, you know, are we hitting the mark, or are there adjustments that need to be made? Those adjustments, some of those adjustments could happen here in the near term while we're, because as you know, we still have time to look at our growth targets and make some adjustments prior to those being legislatively approved next year, probably mid, or early to mid 2022. And then subsequent to that, of course, will be updating our comp plan, which is due in June 2024. And so that's really where the, where the policy work begins to make, to make those changes in order to show that we are consistent across the board. And so the, where we're at right now with this Buildable Lands Report is, as I said, the county has provided a draft of the report to Commerce. We, they, they, they need to finalize that report by the end of July. And so they've given us to July 23rd to get comments back to them on the report so they can make refinements and get that into the final. Now, I'll say that we've been working really closely with the senior long-range planner at the county. They've been really open to conversations and communication. So we've got a direct line, and Katrina and I plan to, to really get into the meat of this and, and either meet up with, meet up with Jessica where we have questions. And I think what makes sense is if council members have questions or have comments, that they provide them through Katrina and I, and we can put them all into one succinct package to send off to Jessica in order for her to make those, either make those changes, refinements, or get us answers to any of those questions that we might have. So yeah, if you could scroll down, Katrina, then, and maybe show them the, that 2010, 2020 map. Oh, Tony, you had a question?
Yeah, can we make a, at least get a link to the draft report for all of us to review if we so choose?
Absolutely, yeah, we'll send that out.
And have you had a chance to review any of it at all? And how is the city stacking up with all of those criteria that you showed on the last slide?
Yeah, we have had, we have had an opportunity to review much of the report. We've looked at, mostly, mostly looked at the inventory and the assumptions capacity analysis. And based on the, the growth target numbers that we had been kicking around. And, and I should say, Tony, and you, you probably, you don't know this, but the growth target numbers were, were done by HBL. They were put into a report, and there was a grant that was provided by Commerce. And so they had a deadline, and when those numbers had to get back to Commerce. Gig Harbor, we, we negotiated with the county, and we didn't want to provide, we weren't, we didn't feel we were ready to provide those numbers yet as, as sort of a final number. We wanted more time, and we wanted to get this Buildable Lands Report done. And so our numbers are shown, are not shown in the report. There's just an asterisk notating that the city has been a part of the process and that we wanted to do more study before we provided those, so. But overall, with the numbers that we've been looking at as far as housing, population, and employment, it looks pretty good at the moment. We're, we're, we think we're, we think we're pretty close to on target. There's just, as Katrina was saying earlier, there's a few things in the capacity analysis that still need to be ironed out, and, and that is that they haven't removed some of the acreage relative to roads or critical areas that would have impact on the total net acreage that we would still have available for development. So, so there's still a little bit more work to be done.
But essentially, what you're telling me that is, we seem to be hitting our targets, and we're not going to be either requested or forced to make any changes that would either allow more development to occur or for it to occur faster than we would like it to.
Uh, well, maybe I should, maybe I should rewind that just a little bit and say that I, I'm not sure if we, if, if, as far as the consistency evaluation goes, we haven't gotten to that point yet. So I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that directly, no.
Okay.
I think I can provide some input here. So we do, we have analyzed, and the report does analyze our permit trends against our allowed and assumed densities. What we need to recall or remember here in analyzing the Buildable Lands Report in particular for this period of the city, there was a portion of the review period where our zoning was allowed much higher dwelling units per acre than the latter part due to the moratorium. However, our permit trends are trending at or above current standards, so we would not have to take any reasonable measures or any other inconsistency. We wouldn't be inconsistent with, with GMA for that. What we don't have yet are established targets. We are getting toward our, we're getting our capacity numbers dialed down. I think we're probably within 5% to 10%. We will then calculate our targets here in order to get, do we have land suitable to accommodate that? We, we feel that we're pretty dang close to that, and it's, preliminarily, it's looking very close to the, the target numbers that this committee was looking at a few months ago. So I, I think the city's in a pretty good position.
Yes, Councilmember Franch? Yes, just, and I don't know if you're gonna cover this, but-
Yes, just, and I don't know if you're going to cover this, but just before I lose my train of thought, have we died, have we nailed down the PPH number?
Yes, we have. The, the city of Gig Harbor persons per household was 1.8% or 1.8 persons per household during the last go around. And we have, based on census data that we have collected, we have the evidence to get us up to a 2.2 persons per household from 1.8.
Very good. Thank you very much.
And just to tie that with a bow, that's, you know, Gig Harbor getting more families in here due to the growth that we've had. So it's increasing our persons per household from a previously, you know, retired community. Quote unquote.
Councilmember Markley.
Thank you. So forgive me if we've covered this before, but when, when we're thinking about an annexation study coming up, possible annexing, are these numbers going to be in place finalized before we would be looking at that study to know if we even want to do anything, have to do anything? Or like how, how do these, how do those two things come together with this particular issue and report and then looking at an annexation study?
That's a good question, councilmember Markley. So the two things, the two items are distinctly different. One being kind of this look back report, how are we doing? Do we have capacity within the city limits? To accommodate our city limit future population. When we're looking at the, the areas within the urban growth area. I mean, I think we've talked, we're looking at more than just population and, you know, capacity. You know, we're looking at what our infrastructure costs are going to be, you know, all of that. What we're hopeful is that this information, the buildable lands report, combined with the land capacity analysis with the annexation study will all come together as very key pieces of information for our next comprehensive plan update. So just to go back to something that councilmember Heim said, so if we, if the city does annex in a portion of the urban growth area, we take the existing population and the existing jobs, but we also take the targeted people and the targeted jobs that were assigned to that area by Pierce County through this process. So the city would grow in size, would grow in terms of that population that we would be absorbing. But we also then would add on to our target, whatever that ends up being set at. That we would take additional target from that UGA area and add it into the city. So essentially the city would grow what our existing target was plus that area.
Okay, thank you very much.
But with the annexation study, it's information that the city currently does not have. And it's a policy discussion of, you know, how do we prioritize areas and should the city be targeting for annexation or releasing portions of their urban growth area? And so all of that coming together for the comp plan is really vital for the policymakers to make those decisions in 2023, 2024.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I had one question. The, the, the targets that, that are being bandied about are, is it consistent or close to being consistent with the percentage for Pierce County overall? Or are we picking up some pieces from other people in terms of the targets?
Prelimarily, it looks like we are within a good percentage. I was just reviewing that before this meeting and it does not appear that any jurisdiction would need to pick up, quote unquote, any additional than what they were being asked to per their category.
Okay, because I, I, I still hang on to the, the concept that Gig Harbor gave at the office big time, particularly starting about 2014 to 2020, we grew like crazy, okay, compared to everybody else. And therefore, we, we have consumed buildable land doing that. That had we held back, we'd be even in better shape than we are right now. That is, we would have met our 2020 target and we'd have land to spare. So I guess I'd just like to kind of keep an eye on that because I'd be more than happy to bring up that issue in the PCR. Because I know there are some other communities, Bonnie Lake in particular, and there's a few others that are in that same situation. Where they, they expanded like crazy in the 2010, 2020 timeframe. And consumed buildable land while they were doing it. And, and, and exceeded their targets for 2020 by quite a bit. So let's, let's just make sure we're, we're kind of keep an eye on that.
Yeah, councilmember Heim, to, to your comment on that for your August meeting, we'll be putting together a white paper that it's going to be comparing the final draft capacity numbers to the, the targets that we previously discussed with this city and compare them.
Great.
So we, we do plan to have that discussion very soon. As it, as Carl and I have mentioned, our feedback to Pierce County is due on the 23rd. And so we're going to be busy cusing everything. And then we hope to have those numbers dialed down in order, in time for your August meeting.
Good, thank you. Yes, councilmember Greenwich.
Yeah, Katrina, just for a second there, you flashed that famous horizontal list. Is that updated from two meetings ago?
Yes, and so it is updated.
And, and you don't need to take, I mean, this meeting could go on forever with me asking questions. So if, if you could just maybe, well, and I don't know if the rest of the, the, the council members want, if you could email me that list and I could review that on my own time, the horizontal list.
Yes, I, I will send that to you. I do want to say I just sent you guys the story map. And so if you scroll down, you'll be able to see this right here. And this has a link to the draft buildable lands report right here. And then the draft capacity tables, if you click here, it'll take you to that handy dandy spreadsheet that I just had up or should. And so if you get here at the bottom, you'll see that all the cities are broken out into different colors. And so we're purple. And you can click on our Gig Harbor capacity and then it's broken down by zone. So you see PRD, R1, R2, R3 across the top. And then housing capacity calculations are on top and employment capacity calculations are on the bottom. Also on here, you can see our, well, it's not letting me show you now, but anyway, you can see the Gig Harbor trends down here. So that'll show you the density trends per zone as well as our actual permits over the, the time period.
Okay, that's, that's great. So when you click on the purple, then that automatically autofills those categories?
Yes.
Okay, and that link, you, you sent us that, the link to the, to get to this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
All right, let's see.
I think there's one more.
Carl, I think we're back to you.
Sorry, what, what were you going to say, Katrina?
Well, if you want to introduce this, then I'll. Can you see my screen?
No.
Going to do the 2010, 2020 inventory comparison.
Oh, yeah.
Just to, for the council to see what we've been looking at. So you'll have access to this too, so you can review it at your leisure. But you'll see. So this is 2010. So you can scroll this and you can kind of fact check what group has occurred over the 10 year period. And the legend is down here. So the, anything in pink is pipeline. So those are lands that we have permits on that are under construction. The kind of sea foam green are underutilized parcels, which again means parcels that do have some development on it that are not up to their highest and best use that could be redeveloped over the time period. Orange are vacant properties. So those are properties that do not have any development on them. And then yellow are vacant single unit. We don't have too many of those. But what is really good about this, and I, I know the members of this committee and how involved you are and that you're interested in this. So I encourage you to take the time and look at the data here. But what you're seeing is 2010, this was our inventory as of 2010. And as you scroll this over, you can see East Bay comes out here because East Bay is no longer part of the UGA. And you can see much of Harbor Hill going from pipeline to developed, just as a, and Harbor Hill again is right up here. But this is the level of data that Carl and I have been looking at parcel specific. We went north to south, all the way through the city, looking at their assumptions. If properties were in our pipeline, if they're built out, if it's underutilized or vacant. And so that's the, you know, the, the comments that I alluded to earlier of all of what, all of what we sent back to the county. Is we, you know, we know our city. So we went through and, you know, looked at parcel specific and we were able to make quite a few comments. But this is pretty dang interesting, in my opinion. I am a land use nerd though, so. But you can kind of see how the city's changed over 10 years.
That's really cool.
That's good. Yeah, I like that.
That's really neat.
Never developed that. God bless them.
They have quite a amazing GIS department over at the county. I think they like doing this stuff.
And so I, I think that kind of sums up the presentation on buildable lands. As far as the, as far as the targets go, again, that report went off to, so just as far as the status update goes, as I was saying earlier, that report went off to the Department of Commerce. So now HBL's hand in that portion of the process is, is, is no longer there. And Pierce County staff is going to take it from here. And so we'll be working, working with Pierce County staff to hone in on those population, housing growth targets as well as the employment growth targets. And now that we're, you know, we'll be armed with the buildable lands report, which is going to help immensely. We can really hone in on those and, and those will be due, as I think I said earlier, sometime in early to mid 2022. After the buildable lands report is, is finalized, I am told that Pierce County is going to come out with a sort of a new timeline for when, when all of these, when all of this data needs to be, needs to be completed. So we'll have more information on that in the coming next, probably the next couple of months, is my guess.
Okay, great. Thank you. There's no other discussion on that first agenda item. Why don't we move on? And I think number two is the countywide planning policies discussion. And yeah, I just found out I'm the presenter of this this morning. So it's going to be an oral report, but I can tell you where we are. We are dealing right now, Pierce County Regional Conference Council is dealing strictly with policy. There's no numbers in there right now. It's strictly a policy discussion. And we've covered environment, affordable housing, urban growth areas, transportation facilities, essential public facilities and military installations and compatibility with military installations. Let me just start on that list real quick. Environment also included the climate change issue. And by the way, I would say that's the one that's the, the, the one that, that, that brought the crowd to their feet. We, we had a huge discussion on the word should versus shall. And somehow the, the last time we saw it, the, the, the word should went to shall. And there was a outcry, including the chair of the, of the PCRC called, wait a minute, what's going on here? And so there's a, a lot of concern there relative to that. A lot of concern relative to the resources to do what they said we should be or we shall be doing. Okay? Called, we don't have climate change experts on our staffs. Okay? And the way it reads right now, it looks like this is being pushed down to the municipal level. Okay? So stay tuned on that one. There, there's a lot of pushback and, and I'm right in it, pushing hard. Called, this looks to me more like something that the state or at the lowest level, the county ought to be running that doggone thing, not the cities. So anyway, that's my personal view, but, and I think there's a lot of support for that view. Affordable housing, we've discussed that twice now, the, the, the draft. And by the way, SHAPE is coming to our July meeting. I think we're one of the few communities that have actually been participating in SHAPE to this point. So I think when the rest of the gang gets the chance to see what is involved there and what SHAPE presents, I think they'll have a, a much more robust discussion on affordable housing. Urban growth areas, that really hasn't, there hasn't been discussed that much in terms of changes to the existing policies that are in effect. There have been some in there, but no major, major ones. Transportation facilities are, there's been a lot of changes, but by the way, luckily we have been involved. If you've got a rapid transit station close to you, you're going to be hugely involved with those changes. I mean, they've got all kinds of requirements, okay? To access to these facilities, parking close to these facilities, I can go right down the line, all the things that the cities are inheriting with these rapid transit facilities. So we are kind of off the hook on that one. If it isn't the line that goes between us and the Tacoma Dome loading area there, over there. We're not going to be heavily involved in the changes to the policies. Essential public facilities, very little discretion. And by the way, this was our first review of that policy, but there wasn't much in there. Yeah, Mayor Keown, you've got a question?
Yeah, and Katrina, we may have to refer to Tony on this just because of a lot of past knowledge, but you know, obviously the, the, the state wants us to, to adjust our, our, our parcels so that they can build tighter to accommodate all this. And as we've always said, we shouldn't have to, you know, basically sacrifice this, our city to accommodate all the people. But so, so my point is in, in some ways, though, one is, the one is to utilize our urban growth area. Um, and I don't think they let us bank the East Bay, but you know, for us to, so I guess my question is, do they? Because some of them are UGA isn't maybe like pretty, isn't really desirable. So do they make you bank your, do they make you use your UGA before they draw other line? You have to get okay from the county to have new UGA line, lines. So do they make you use your existing UGA before they draw other lines that might be more favorable to us? And Tony might have to answer that too.
It's, it's not as set in stone in state law as it could be. The county does have the ability in how Pierce County is set up to oppose an expansion of, of an urban growth area. So if we were, let's say we had an excess target that we couldn't accommodate within the city and we didn't want to upzone. So we were looking for additional areas to be within the city limits. The county through, the county itself could. Well, first they would probably comment that, that that's not wise, that we should take the areas of the UGA that we haven't taken in. If we couldn't prove that we've looked at the other urban growth area areas and if they weren't valid for some reason, then the county could appeal us to the Growth Management Hearings Board. So if we were going to make a decision to expand into rural area and make it city, it would have to be a very good case.
Right, but like, I'm looking at the UGA map and I'm like, pretty is a mess, but you know, Reed Road, all of Reed Road is a, is a UGA. But unless we want to all of Reed Road is a, is a UGA, but unless we want to chop everyone's house into two or three, most of it's actually developed. And so it doesn't really serve for what they want us to do. Whereas the airport area is not in our UGA. And it, it, obviously you gotta be able to fly over houses, I don't know how that's all going to work, but that's more desirable. So absorbing, we almost have to be given other UGA that, that actually has available land for, unless they want to ruin what we've already developed of our city.
Yeah.
So, so I would add just a little bit to that. The analysis that we would have to do in order to argue that we want to expand our UGA lines, so we can take into, call it our sphere, our parcels that can be developed would require us to show why things in our current UGA can't be developed. So that, that involves, is it, you have a lot of critical lands, you have a lot of slopes and a lot of ways where you would have to exclude a bunch of property from being developed. And we can't meet our targets because of that, that we need more land. And that's a very, very difficult analysis to do. I don't know if staff would have the capacity from a time standpoint. From a knowledge standpoint, I think you eventually could, if we just gave you that task and nothing else to do. But expanding your urban growth boundary can be a very, very time consuming and expensive process. You really need to think about that before you jump into it, because you don't want to waste a whole lot of time and money and have the county say, nope, we disagree, you still have the buildable land, and you need to figure out a way to make that land be built on.
Okay.
With, with agreeing with everything that Tony just said, I will say that the process that we've undertaken over the past year with the reduction of our targets based on the new policy adjusted Vision 2050, you know, our, our share of residential growth has been cut in half. So we won't be, we won't be asked to take as much population as we were during the last round. So we may not be in a situation where we would need to look for additional land. We may, again, it's still a may at this point, have sufficient capacity within the city to accommodate our population target. That is yet to be seen with employment.
That was what I was going to ask, employment.
Yep.
Councilor Franch, you got a question?
Yeah. So, you know, I know the county's been, and I don't know the exact, and maybe you can answer the question. I know there's been talk here about, we only have, you know, we're, we're supposedly by a certain time, we were supposed to have annexed all the UGA. Is that, is that timeline just been kicked down the road, or is, is there any heat coming that, where the county is going to start forcing us to, or in other jurisdictions, or has it just gone silent?
I would say the discussions have not disappeared, however, they are much more silent than they were two years ago. I don't want to pass the buck, but I think they have some other larger fish to fry than having the focus spotlight being on us. We do know that the county does want us to prioritize the portions of the UGA that are completely surrounded by city. Such as on Scansey Avenue, there's an area of UGA that is otherwise U-shaped surrounded by city. So for provision of services, it would make sense, logical sense to include them. There's another one north on Burnham, just before you get to Borgan, where it's the freeway on one side, and then it's surrounded by city on all other three sides. The county has been very vocal about us taking those areas in. And I think that that's a pretty valid argument that will likely come out of a, the annexation study, they'll likely be, well, I don't want to preclude a public process, but I think that those ones from a professional, our professional standpoint would make the most sense to, to take in. And so the county is pressuring us for those. However, the rest of it, we have not heard from the county on the rest of UGA.
Very good. And Councilmember Himes?
Yeah.
In, in your, in your report there, you had mentioned some of the should changing to shows when it comes to environment?
Yep. That's one of the areas. There's several. That was the one that, that lit the, lit the fuse, was the environment thing.
Is the, who's going to win the tug of war? This, because the state's going to be, you know, they're, they're trying to ram climate change down every jurisdiction's throat.
Absolutely, absolutely. That, that's a good question. I think it's also related to who's going to provide the resources to make this thing actually work. And right now, that will be one of our major defenses called, well, you know, all you gotta do, guys, is just send the check here, and we'll have our environmental experts check this out.
Right, right, but you know, the state is notorious for forcing unfunded mandates. That's what they do.
I know. And by the way, that's another sore point on the transportation side, but hopefully we will avoid. But by the way, the other guys are really howling already on the transportation side. That's another big issue with them.
Well, I, I, I would just like to say that I, I'm very thankful that we have Councilmember Himes representing our, our city at the PCRC and the Puget Sound Regional Council. I, I think he's a, a good voice for the council and, and the citizens, so thank you.
Thank you. By the way, the, the last item on my list was military installations, and we're essentially not really affected by that. That's surround, communities surrounding Joint Base Lewis McCord in particular, that's what goes on there. One thing I will say is the overall tone of the PCRC is starting to shift. They're starting to become cautious, is the word I would use. We haven't seen, that, that group has been exposed to no numbers whatsoever. All we've talked is policy. Well, the should and shall thing just brought it right to the surface immediately called, well, it depends on how big the number is, and that kind of thing. So I think we may be kind of at the end of our rope until the, the numbers come forth. The, the policy and the numbers from that viewpoint have got to be somewhat hand in hand, okay? Particularly if we're going to use words like shall, okay? And I think the group is becoming a little more reluctant to say, oh yeah, this is great, this is the way it is. So we'll see what happens, but I, I noticed that change in, in tenor at the last meeting big time. They're getting a little reluctant to, to buy into some of these things until they see the numbers.
Okay, that's it for me. And I think number three is employment target setting introduction. And that's you, Katrina, or Carl?
I'm, I'm coming, I'm just getting myself unmuted here. Let me pull up the spreadsheet here. So this is a lot like the spreadsheet that we were looking at previously for population. Population and housing target setting. And again, this, these numbers have already been sent out in a, you know, a draft report to Commerce. So, and again, we'll have time to hone these numbers, hone these numbers down as we're, you know, moving forward here into 2022. But as you can see here, so we've got an estimated employment target for 2019, actual number for 2019 of 12,422. Right now, they're showing our allocation for 2044 at 15,922, so the delta there would be 3,500. Based on what we're seeing in the capacity analysis right now, this kind of truths out. Again, there's still some work that needs to be done on, in the capacity analysis and those assumption tables. But I, I think it's showing somewhere in the 3,700 jobs for our capacity. So this, this kind of truths out. And, and remember that we're looking at, you know, a planning horizon of 2044. So I think this turns out to be, I want to say it was about 120 jobs a year or something like that, if it, you know, if it actually came to fruition. So anyway, that's the, that's the draft number for now. And again, we'll be analyzing and scrutinizing this in the coming months. Making sure that it is consistent with, with the buildable lands and, and our capacity and the assumptions.
Councilor Franch, question? Yeah, so Carl, this employment target number, I'm assuming that th- this is directly correlated with the buildable, or the, the, yeah, the buildable lands study.
Do you mean, is it based on capacity and, and those assumptions?
Well, I mean, you know, we have, when we're, when we're, when they're assessing our buildable lands, you know, we have so much R1, we have so much,
Right.
you know, the different districts down the line. So does this 3,500 number fit in with our, our commercially zoned areas right now?
It does, yeah. That's, and the, right now, the assumptions and the capacity is sort of truthing out somewhere around 3,700 actually. So this is actually a little bit, a little bit shy of what's being shown right now in the draft buildable lands report. So that, that's why I was saying, this, this number actually looks pretty, it, it looks daunting, but it actually is pretty, pretty close to spot on, we think, at this point in the process.
Can I please offer just a quick clarification? The, when we're looking at this spreadsheet, council members, it's the 2044 targets that are set by Vision 2050. So this is the policy assigned numbers, employment numbers for the 20-year horizon that were done through PSRC. This itself is not looking at our capacity at all. This is kind of a, a separate exercise. So what this is essentially saying is that our estimated total employment, so jobs in 2019 was 12,422. The vision or the policy adjusted document of Vision 2050 is assumed through its model that the city would grow by 3,500 jobs over that 20-year planning horizon, bringing us to 15,922. And that's jobs total. What Carl is relating that to, and I think what Councilmember Franch was getting at, is, you know, how does this compare to the draft capacity analysis? And as Carl mentioned, there's about a 200 job difference right now between this 3,500 and what we're showing for our capacity. So again, with the draft capacity numbers, we're showing that we would not have to expand or upzone for employment. That's what the numbers are saying currently. Again, we're going to go in and truth additional, within the additional employment zones. But it is looking very close when you compare this with the capacity number.
Let me do just a question. This does not distinguish between residents who are employed here and non-residents who are employed here. This is just total employment, correct?
Yes, these are jobs that are held within city limits.
Okay, because like I say, the 12,422 obviously exceeds the adult population of Deep Harbor quite a bit.
That's right. We have a big influx during the day, and then the population shrinks back down at night time.
Okay. And they don't distinguish between income levels on these jobs, do they? This is jobs, just period jobs.
Yeah, it, it is, it is jobs. We can look at in the analysis, and I don't want to bore everyone, but depending on what zone you're in, they assume certain percentage of industrial and commercial jobs. Just, this is very broad stroke, so take it for what it's worth, but you know, industrial manufacturing jobs, they tend to pay more, let's say, than a retail fast food job. So if, you know, if we're looking at a policy of a city having, you know, living wage jobs, we would want to kind of consider what our commercial industrial balance is in terms of creating those jobs. But this in particular does not do that.
Okay.
That's a policy item that the council can look at through the comp plan update.
Okay. Yeah, Jim. So Katrina, what, what is the, you know, how, how did this, what was our, I, I see that in 2000, the 2019, the actual is 12,422. How does that compare to what it was, the estimated or the, the target was for the last planning period?
I'll have to get, or Carl can get back to you on that unless you have that handy, Carl.
I, I don't. I'd have to go find that for you.
Okay, well, I'm just, because you know, I, I, I don't, this is a really hard, there's no, what, what is the mechanism that, that somebody could force us to meet these numbers with? Because, you know, meeting, building more housing developments is a lot easier to, for the city to allow than to force somebody to build an office building, so to speak.
I can answer that a little bit, that if, just like with housing, if you're not meeting your employment targets, you can take a look at how you've zoned your property, what incentives you're providing, what the market is looking for, and are you allowing that sort of development to occur? So we need to take a look at the property that we have that is commercial or industrial zoned and see if we think it is adequate to allow us to slowly over time continue having developed, commercial development occur and more employment coming into town. If that's not happening, then the folks in Pierce County are coming to have a chat with us.
Yep, and, and to build off of what Tony just said, I think within this committee, you've heard me talk about several policies that I believe we should institute in our comprehensive plan moving forward. One of the main things that we can do is looking at rezones or comprehensive plan amendments. As you aptly know, Councilmember Franch, there's kind of a drive for single family now, and all across the Puget Sound region, it's not just the city of Deep Harbor. We're seeing commercial industrial land converted to single family, you know, and thereby losing out potential jobs in the future. Something that cities do have is you know, while the council's considering a rezone or a comp plan amendment, does the conversion of the land from a residential to employment zoning, does that put us out of whack with our targets? And currently, that's not something that we have, that's not a check and balance that we, in our code, analyze those against. And so I think that that would be something that staff would recommend that we do in terms of rezoning comp plan amendments to ensure consistency with our targets.
Good point. Yeah, I think when you throw those two items in there, land utilization and employment, and then throw in the wildcard of affordable housing, it, it gives you a, well, it gives you a headache for owners, but it, it, it's quite a, it's a juggling act, literally. Called, I gotta give a little bit here to get a little bit there, and what's, what's the best trade-offs you can make? So, yeah, have fun with that one. That's, that's going to be a, an interesting discussion.
Councilmember Himes, Councilmember Himes, if I could, I do have the, the employment targets from the last time around. We were, we were at 8,351 jobs estimated in 2008. And our total employment target for 2030 was 10,189.
Another good one for, we gave at the office.
Yeah.
As, as a defense mechanism. That's a good one. Thank you.
Carl.
Yeah, make sure you send that out in some form.
Okay, I can send that to you all.
Couple extra copies in my vault, okay.
And Councilmember Himes, you're always welcome to participate in the comp plan update as a citizen, and we hope you do.
Okay, oh yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Okay, we are up then. Does that conclude employment target setting, or did you have more?
No, that's all there is, Councilmember Himes.
Okay, thank you, that's great. And then item number four was the special use permit, the COVID relief discussion. I guess to bring to I guess to bring Tony up to, to speed, uh, we allowed certain things in outdoor environments for COVID. And now we may have overachieved in some aspects. So I will turn that one over to you, I believe, Katrina. You're gonna handle that one?
Thank you, council member Himes. Um, let's see. And for Tony, I will send you the ordinance, but we, the city enacted ordinance fourteen-forty-five on June eighth, twenty-twenty. And effectively, the ordinance temporarily suspended our special use provisions and some of our encroachment provisions within the code. And the purpose of that was to allow for commerce. Our businesses at that time, a lot of them were shut down. Some of the, you know, restaurants needed to utilize some of the right-of-way in order to facilitate pickup. A lot of the downtown merchants, for instance, needed to, you know, they were having sidewalk sales because we couldn't have people inside. And so the ordinance, I believe, allowed for our businesses to facilitate kind of keeping them open during the pandemic. The, it has been utilized by quite a few of our merchants in particular downtown area. The purpose of this update today, staff is not recommending repealing of the ordinance. It's informational only to the Planning and Building Committee that we have started to receive. Probably our first complaint was maybe two months ago. And then now that the governor has lifted the restrictions, people are asking. The complaints range from utilization of parking spaces that now should be utilized for cars, now that commerce is picking up noise late at night from, you know, restaurants utilizing outdoor space that previously was indoor. And then a more minor complaint that we've received is that they're unsightly and don't meet our design manual. To date, we've been able to explain to the citizens that are complaining that, you know, the purpose of why we adopted the ordinance. Tony, for your information, the ordinance was set to, it expired either, well, it expires December thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty-one, sorry. So at the end of this year, it will expire. And the council's reasoning at that time was a lot of the tents, chairs, things that they needed to purchase in order to have their commerce take place outside of their building was rather expensive. And so give them, you know, a full year and a half of utilizing that expense for, for the COVID purposes. So the purpose of this today is not to ask council for any necessary discussion or action. It's more to let you know that we are receiving these complaints. Staff are fielding them, explaining the purpose of the ordinance, and that it does expire at the end of December. And so things would need to kind of go back to as they were, again, assuming we're not going to enter another emergency. And things are going to continue to go back to normal.
So my first question is, is how many complaints? I appreciate you telling me the nature of them, but how many? Is it three, or is it thirty, or is it a hundred?
Um, formal code enforcement complaints, we've probably had six. And, you know, folks just calling Michelle and Cindy, you know, complaining about them, it's probably twenty. It's, it's more than we get complaints about most other things, which is why I wanted to bring it up to, for the council, to know at least what's going on. And that we are handling those, and we are aware that they expire at the end of the year. And we'll be communicating to the businesses as that approaches, that, you know, the time is sunsetting, and so please make arrangements to remove this from X, Y, Z.
And so how have the complaints taken the explanations that you've provided? Have they said, oh, okay, I understand, or are they saying, yeah, I don't agree with that?
I would say that most of them are generally understanding, once they realize that it's not inconsistent with the city code. We do have one particular instance on the water where a series of families have filed multiple code enforcement complaints against a business and even included those complaints into a hearing examiner meeting. So that portion is, that in particular instance has escalated. However, upon discussion with the hearing examiner on record, the examiner deferred to the city to deal with it through our ordinance and our code enforcement process if necessary.
So, so when did the major volume of these things arise?
What was that?
When did the major chunk of the complaints arrive?
Um, probably within the last two months.
Okay, so would it be safe to assume that colder weather is on our side in this discussion? I just have a feeling that, going back to last winter, we didn't gain noise complaints, at least I'm aware of any, maybe we did. And when they have to put all the temporary walls and everything on their tents and, and, and plus, I don't think there were that many people in there either, from what I saw. So this thing may be, to some extent, self, self-healing, okay? Even before December thirty-first gets here. One, we may have the better use of inside facilities, particularly in the colder weathers. I am hoping that'll happen.
Especially the one on the waterfront that has, I believe that there's been at least two people that have emailed full council about the, the particular one on the waterfront. And we do believe that the colder weather will, will have the effect of moving people indoors and not out in the elements, I should say. So, we keep her.
Okay, yes, Mayor Dune.
Yeah, I do, if it's still going as planned, the old CenturyLink building on Rosedale and, um, Stinson is not going to be as tall as it appears. So maybe Katrina can let you know that, because I'm sure, I want you, I want council to know that, because they're going to be asked from citizens. I've had people staring at that wall.
I have too.
So you report, I think council needs to know about it, so, because it, it's not going to be what it is. Go ahead.
For, yeah, council member Himes, are we moving off of this agenda item onto the good of the order?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so the CenturyLink building at Stinson and Rosedale, it does house the Gig Harbor Peninsula's nine-one-one center. So there's very important equipment that are located within that building. The, the contractor originally came in and wanted to increase the height, which is currently, I believe, twelve or thirteen feet of that structure up to twenty-eight feet. That particular parcel is within the height restriction area. And so they would need a variance in order to build to the height that they wanted to build to. Within the spirit of getting to us, noting that our, the infrastructure for nine-one-one is there, and made a suggestion to, to the contractor and Paul Wright, the building official, was in the meeting as well and provided valuable advice. But we suggested that they build a temporary structure over the roof while they're repairing the roof. And then it would come down afterwards. So that's essentially what they're doing. They're building a large temporary structure that will allow for workers to get on the roof, replace the roof, make the building secure and stable. And once the project is complete, the temporary walls and roof will come down.
Okay, and it will? It looks pretty permanent. It will come down?
It will, yes. We, I issued an administrative approval for, for that permit, and it's, it's temporary nature.
Good.
Okay, Councilmember Franch, you had a question? Yeah, so when the project is complete, it is gonna be, there used to be a piece of wood that was on the back of that property line. And I'm, I'm assuming that's what the DRB approved, was that height, so it's not going to be any higher than that, that temporary piece of wood that was on the back portion of the property line?
It will not be any taller than it was previously. So we did not grant them any height increase.
Oh, I thought that they increased it by two feet.
I don't think so, but I can look at the plans again and get back to you.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank, thank you for bringing that up, Mayor, because I, I would have slipped my mind. I've had more than a handful of people ask me about that structure, so.
I bet.
Okay, just, just for my own edification, that property is, it's east of Rose, east of Stinson, I'm sorry, and south of Rosedale. And one of my questions was, even, even if it's temporary, if, if it's the piece of property, I think it is, above it, there are no residences that can't look over the doggone thing. Uh, you've got that empty lot there where the Goodwill truck used to be on the corner of Stinson and Rosedale on the other side. Uh, and that lot is still empty, the one sitting there, the one that used to be a parking lot. I don't know what it was.
People can see down, I know just from how these hills are terraced, that it does affect people's views.
Well, it does, okay.
So this is it currently?
Yeah, that's good. And that thing just to the left of it is that empty parking lot I was talking about.
Yeah, this is a, that's property here. These homes here actually do have views over that building down into the water, these three homes here.
Okay.
And so that was part of what was taken into consideration with this being, these homes are outside of the height area, but over these parcels along Rosedale, all are subject to the eighteen-feet foot limitation.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't know if you look, I guess you're looking due northwest.
Well, plus, it's better to have a territorial view than a wall in front of you, too.
Yeah, 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 that's true. That's true. Okay. I also think it's about respecting the integrity of the height restriction area just in general. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, but you're gonna manage this with a, a temporary structure?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? I, are, are you gonna, be- before you adjourn, I, I have something I'd like to talk about just under general comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we at that point in the meeting, or?
Yeah, I think we're at that point in the meeting. We've gone through all the agenda items.
Okay, um, I, I, and I'll, I'll send this to Councilmember Himes. I'd like to have a discussion about the, uh, what's called the furthering the Fair Housing Act. This is a federal policy that came about, um, probably in the two thousand fifteen era where there was this big push, and I, I believe it's what's driving Tacoma. I don't know if any of you have properties in Tacoma, but the Tacoma City Council is about an inch away from getting rid of their R1 zones. And under their moderate approach, they want to allow duplexes, triplexes, and cottages in the R1 zone. And the next step up from that is small-scale apartments in their R1 zones. And this is about, uh, an equity, uh, discrimination. There's, there's just, there's a whole lot that is behind this, and I believe that it is. And Katrina, I don't know if you can correct me if I'm wrong, that I believe this is all about furthering this, what's called the furthering the Fair Housing Act of, I believe it was nineteen-sixty-five or seventy-five. And so is, is that, is the county buying into any of that that we're gonna need to worry about?
This is a very hot button issue, I would say, and I would expect it to be in the next few legislative sessions. I know there were a few bills that were introduced during the previous session that did not make it out of committee. However, this is a, a topic that I think we will need to watch as things move forward. But I, to my knowledge, the county is not necessarily for or against this. I don't think, I haven't heard them have a position.
Okay, so if, if, if they're not at this point, and we make it through our population allocations, and two years from now, there is some mandate that comes down from the state level, will we be somewhat insulated from having to ruin our R1 zones by some sort of top-down push of legislation, uh, under the cover of our population allocations?
Um, if that were to happen, what I would imagine is our population allocation would stay the same. However, we may be required to look at what uses are allowed in each of our zones. So if what you're, what you're talking about Tacoma, for instance, wanting to allow for duplexes, cottages, et cetera, we would need to look at our density assumptions per zone. And so likely, the land capacity analysis would show more capacity on R1 zones than what we have right now, where we assume four units per acre. It, it would depend on what the state law said. But likely, it would, um, we would be able to accommodate it, but it would take a major comp plan and zoning effort.
Do you think that this is anything that, that this committee at this point in time needs to? I mean, I think it's important for the whole council to know what, what, what is happening with this whole movement. And, or do you feel that we're, it, we're years away and we really don't have anything to worry about?
My recommendation would be for our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee to have our lobbyists follow this very closely. We had Josh and his team following it very closely during the last session to know if we needed to be involved or not. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, yes, Tony, you had a question?
No, not, not a question, just I want to follow up on that a little bit. Like Katrina got most of it right there, that just because a bill was, didn't go through at the state level, doesn't mean it's not going to be reintroduced, which it means it will probably be reintroduced. And if you think about some of the larger policy issues in the state over the last twenty-five, thirty years, it has taken two to three, sometimes four sessions to get, and growth management's a great example of that. This has been an issue for at least the last two legislative sessions that I've been paying attention to. And it just keeps inching closer and closer and closer. And half of it is density, but quite frankly, the other half is affordability. So we may not be forced to make our zoning more dense, but we may be forced to figure out ways to make the cost of housing less. So think of things like building height, building materials, any parking requirements. Parking is a big item when it comes to affordability. So there's a whole bunch of things that we may be told that we have to take a look at and adopt that don't necessarily increase our density, but impact other areas that we need to be concerned about.
Well, absolutely, and what scares me is they're, they're forcing this through under a large part through the guise of discrimination. And when you start talking about discrimination, it's, that's a real hard thing to be against. And the last thing I, I want to see Gig Harbor become is what they did to the Proctor District, and what they're continuing to do to the Proctor District. And, um, you know, the, there's another giant building going in, in the Proctor District. And, you know, the, the, the neighbors, the people that bought in an R1 zone, thinking they were going to be living in an R1 environment, their rights are getting trashed under the guise of this push. So, um, I think it's something that, that we need to have our eyes wide open on, so.
I, I have definitely agreed.
Great, thanks a lot, guys. Yeah, that's, um, that's a real good point. By the way, that goes back to my, what my comment on the employment, the population increase, and affordable housing called. When you stir all that together, uh, it gets very interesting, particularly in Gig Harbor. I'll even embellish a little bit more, where the value of land here is primarily location-related. It's not employment-related, it's not, uh, those types of things. It's basically, it's location. And so it's, uh, it's going to be a very sticky issue, okay, that we're gonna have to deal with. So, anyway, any other comments?
I have one more item, council member Himes, that I wanted to bring up. There's a bill that was just signed into law by the governor about requirements now for local jurisdictions for permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. I can send you the link to the bill, but it's Senate Bill twelve twenty. What this states is that a city shall not prohibit transitional housing or permanent supportive housing in any zones in which residential dwelling units or hotels are allowed. Unlike other state laws where jurisdictions have the ability to work on these in comp plan updates, the directive by this bill that again has been signed by the governor is that we have to do something by September thirtieth of this year.
Ooh.
So with that being said, Carl and I have reached out to our compadres in other cities within Pierce County to see what they are doing with this. We are looking at our options. This came in middle of last week, just before the holiday. And so we don't have anything prepared for you yet, but it may be something that we will need to add or likely will be something that we'll need to add to our August meeting to discuss and potentially call for a special meeting to focus on this. I want to be able to adequately brief and discuss this with Tony and the mayor prior to that, but I just wanted to let you know that this came down the pipe and the city is going to have to do something about it.
Okay, no, well, thank you. By all means, yeah, I think we should put it on the August agenda, plan on discussion here. And it sounds like we're going to have to move very fast on this thing. And it's going to be a tough one. Whether, from what you, what you've said, twelve twenty is the number on that thing you said?
Yep, and I'll go ahead and send it to the committee.
Okay, all right, great. That would be great. Okay, thank you. Any other items? Okay, with that, do we have?
Move to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the meeting is adjourned and welcome aboard again, Tony. We deliberately held off on some issues till you got here and.
Keep things interesting for me. I appreciate it.